Okay. Good morning. Welcome to the Bucks County Commissioners Meeting for October 18th, 2023. We'll begin, do the salute to the flag. We will, I'll ask members who are here, people who are here today, as you may notice, a lot of us wearing blue and white. We have also turned the lights here at the Administration Building, blue and white, in light of the attack on Israel last week and the ongoing conflict there. So, following the Pledge of Allegiance, we ask for a moment of silence and pray for peace in that area of the world. So, stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, thank everyone for being here. We, as you probably know, we've have a policy on our second meeting of the month to recognize employees who have hit milestones here in terms of county service. And so, we ask them to come if they're able to come. We know that some of them bring coworkers and people to help them celebrate their milestones. We do have a little something for them. So, when we do call your name, you know, you're welcome to, you know, if you want to say a few words, you're welcome to say a few words. You don't have to. It's up to you. I know not everybody likes saying a few words. That's okay. So, and then we do have something for you, and then we'll also do a photograph for our communications team. So, first person we are recognizing is from juvenile probation and parole, Richard Carbo, celebrating 20 years. Mr. Carbo? Oh.
I don't have any words.
Okay.
If you're sure if I come up to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, come on. Yep. That's all right.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do they have the same time or just do them all together? All right. I think we're gonna do, what do you want to do? We'll do now? All right.
Thank you.
Twenty years is pretty. Try this again. So, 20 years certainly is a long time for service here to the county. Forty years? I didn't teach math, but 40 years is double that, I'm pretty sure. From the shamy manner, we are honored to have a celebrating 40 years, Pam Huber is here.
Thank you. I'd like to say that I appreciate the opportunity to work with such fine people for 40 years.
No? Congratulations. Thank you. We are also recognizing, we talked at our meeting, first meeting of this month about fire safety. This is also celebrating National First Responder Day. We do have Chris Woods, Deputy Director of Bucks County Emergency Services, who's here. And.
Good morning, Commissioners, and those in attendance here and virtually. National First Responder Day is observed on October 28th, 2023. Congress enacted this day in 2017. The resolution honors police officers, firefighters, and EMS providers that respond to our nation's various emergencies, including September 11th, the Boston Marathon bombing, Hurricane Katrina, and everyday emergencies. There are several ways that we can observe this holiday by saying thanks to our first responder community, a random act of kindness, fundraising, and volunteering time to take CPR classes, community policing classes, and working with our volunteer fire companies. I also have a presentation, if you wanted to move forward, from the American Heart Association.
Okay, sure.
Did you want to move forward with that on your?
Yeah, we have, it's sort of, we have people all over the county who, you know, are first responders of some type and are always ready to jump into action. Obviously, happened here earlier this year with someone who is in the room today. Had a medical emergency and had to be, you know, resuscitated. And were conscious of the fact that there was, just a few days ago, one of our first responders who did sadly pass away. So, we think about him and his family. But there are two individuals here specifically who we recognize, and so I'm going to ask Michael and Barbara Staboulis if they could come forward, please. You're welcome to bring your family if you want to.
In January of this year, Mike and Barb were attending a basketball game at a school in Northampton Township. I'm sorry, June. One of the referees in the game ended up going into cardiac arrest. Barb and Michael provided cardiopulmonary resuscitation and shock. The referee with an AED were able to regain pulses, and the patient was conscious, alert, and oriented when he arrived at a local hospital. The patient survived the incident. Annually, there are over 350,000 events of cardiac arrest with approximately 10% that survived the event and are able to walk outside of the hospital. Forty percent of those patients receive bystander CPR. I have here in front of me a Heart Saver Hero Award from the American Heart Association, which is their way of saying thank you for performing the heroic act of CPR, which is a critical link in the chain of survival. We want to recognize the heroes that have stepped in to save the life during an emergency. You have not only helped save the life within your community, but you are also partnering with the American Heart Association to improve the survival rate of citizens who receive bystander CPR.
And we have something as well, which is sort of maybe do this all once. So, you know, I'm going to summarize because we have two proclamations here, one for Mr. Staboulis and one for Michael. We, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, write to commend you for your heroic efforts on June 23rd, 2023. When the two of you sprang into action and saved a life during a basketball game in Northampton Township, though you both were off duty that day, you did not hesitate to employ your skills and training in emergency medicine after a referee collapsed. When the medical emergency occurred, you knew to begin CPR until additional first responders arrived to transport the patient to hospital for further care. Because of your quick thinking, the patient survived with minimal deficits. As first responders, you answer the call every day, including, as you have shown, on days off. And we are privileged to live in a community that counts dedicated professionals like you among not just its residents, but also its treasured public servants. We join all Bucks Countings in congratulating you on the job well done and in offering our gratitude for your years of service to this county. We wish you continued health and success in the immensely important work you do in service to our community. So, would love to have you come forward. Okay, we are also recognizing this month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner Marsaglia has her proclamation as you'll read.
Thank you. Whereas nearly one in four women and one in nine men in the United States experience domestic abuse, according to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and whereas the abuse can include physical and sexual violence, economic, psychological, or technical actions or threats, influence another person within an intimate, to influence a person within an intimate relationship, according to the U.S. Department of Justice. And whereas, in addition to death and injury, domestic violence has been linked to numerous adverse health outcomes, as well as psychological and social consequences. Whereas here in Bucks County, A Woman's Place is dedicated to helping individuals experiencing domestic violence, their children, and their families through a full range of programs and services. And whereas through Domestic Violence Awareness, though Domestic Violence Awareness Month comes only once a year, Bucks County is committed, with the help of A Woman's Place, to protecting our entire community year round, regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity, from the terrible lasting effects of domestic violence. So, now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout the county of Bucks. In so doing, we encourage all citizens to work toward ending domestic violence by empowering all people to develop healthier relationships and assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need. We also offer our gratitude to A Woman's Place for their leading role in this action.
Thank you. And we do have, from A Woman's Place, Jennifer Locker. And we do have here today, from A Woman's Place, Jennifer Locker, and from NOVA, Penny Ettinger.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Locker from A Woman's Place, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here this morning. We deeply appreciate your support in recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month and the impact that domestic violence has in our community here. A Woman's Place has been serving survivors in our community since 1976. Our goal is always to support our survivors from the moment they walk through our doors and on their path until flourishing. Last year, we answered 3,000 hotline calls from survivors in this community in need of assistance and support. From that moment, they enter into our system and to whatever services and programs are best beneficial for them at that moment. For those in need of safety and fleeing from a harmful situation, we offer a safe house in an undisclosed location and 24/7 staff to support them in their needs. Along those needs, they're often connected with our rapid rehousing program. In that, we provide ongoing case management and rental assistance for up to a year so that families can fully achieve their goals and become self-sufficient once again. For those in need of assistance within the justice system, our team of advocates provide assistance through the PFA process with accompaniment, support, and advocacy. They also provide support through the criminal justice system doing just the same. And it's with the support of collaborative partners such as the Prothonitaries Office, law enforcement, and the DA's office, that we work to make sure victims are informed of their rights along the process and feel that their voice is heard. For those in need of legal representation, we have a dedicated attorney who provides representation for PFA court, as well as for custody court, and provides advice to a ton others. For those in need of counseling services, we have a two-tiered approach where those who are in immediate crisis meet with our crisis team to talk about safety planning, education about domestic violence, and help them plan for their next steps forward. Once beyond their crisis, we connect them with our trauma therapist, who are trained in trauma-informed, evidence-based modalities to not only focus on the trauma they've recently experienced, but other traumas that they've experienced in their life that have led them to where they are today. And for those of them who have had their children impacted by domestic violence, our children's advocacy team works to rebuild positive relationships between the survivors and their children, and give children a safe space to express their emotions. And then for the rest of the community, our education team goes out to talk to schools, hospitals, any community partner who will have them, about the impact of domestic violences and the services that we can provide. It's not without the help of all of the other community partners that collaborate with us that we're able to do the work that we do, and we are so grateful to be in a community that's dedicated to serving those in need. Last, I'd just like to make a little bit of a plug for our event for Domestic Violence Awareness Month that is coming up on Monday, the 23rd. It is our annual candlelight vigil. The purpose of this event is to honor the lives who have been lost, remember them, and then reaffirm our commitment to the mission of ending intimate domestic violence for all. If you feel so moved, we invite you to attend with us. It is at 7:00 PM at the James Laurel House in Doylestown. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
You've just about heard it all. They're just an amazing organization. So, I'm Penny Ettinger. I'm the Executive Director at NOVA, and we have been community partners with A Woman's Place since they started 47, or is it 48 years ago? And just recently, when non-fatal strangulation became a felony instead of a misdemeanor in Pennsylvania, our forensic nurse team now provides that service to any person who walks into an emergency department in five of our six hospitals to provide not only the care, but also the evidence collection, which has led to, even during COVID, several full prosecutions. So, we work closely with the DA's Office, obviously, and law enforcement, but really, our partnership is with, a strong partnership with A Woman's Place. They have worked tirelessly. The staff has worked, they work 24/7, 365. And we are there to support them, and often individuals who are victims of domestic violence are sadly also the victims of other types of crime. So, I thank you for supporting A Woman's Place and for supporting services for domestic violence in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to invite our prothonitary, Colleen Christian. Obviously, her office handles PFAs if you're. Sure, you want to speak or?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak today during Domestic Violence Month and give the following report. For many in Bucks County, the Office of the Prothonitary is a bit of a mystery, but today I'm here to speak about one of the most important things, if not the most important thing, that we do, and that is protection from abuse orders. And I'm going to date myself a little bit here, but when I was growing up, it was the restraining order, but today it's protection from abuse, and the shorthand is the PFA. When I first came into this position, I was shocked and alarmed by the number of PFAs coming through my office, and I came before the Commissioners asking for support in the creation of a protection from abuse administrator. And I thank you so very much for that support. And I'm here to report that it is an extraordinary asset, both to the Prothonitaries Office and to the Bucks County at large. The stats are no less grim than the last time that I was here. In 2023, the PFAs recorded are set to be the highest ever on record. We are projected to come in about 878 protection from abuse orders, up somewhat close to 60% from 2014. So, that is a very dire picture. And what are we doing about it? What is the Prothonitary doing to address it? What is the county doing to address it? I do want to say that we have reestablished our relationship with A Woman's Place, and they are going to be onsite, helping folks fill out their applications. And in terms of applications, Commissioner Marsaglia also issued me a challenge, and she called me one day and she said, these packets, this, this application is so intimidating. Does it have to be this many pages? And I started thinking about what she said, like, how are we more efficient? How do we save paper and people? And I'm very proud to report that the Prothonitaries Office is going to be rolling out an electronic version of how you can fill out the application. And people can do this in their homes, they can do it on their tablets, and most importantly, they can do it on their phones. So, if they want to come in the old-fashioned way and still fill out the paper, they can, but we are moving forward and trying to make people safer and make things easier so they can get help. If you've ever been to PFA court, it is many, many moving pieces, and it is very stressful. There is a lot of emotion, a lot of tension. People are angry, they're sad, there are some people trying to intimidate others. So, one of the things that I did was I did ask the sheriff if he would help us with the deputy, and we now do have a deputy present at PFA court to keep things safe and even. And if the sheriff is providing us the safety, this next part provides us the heart. We have what we fondly call the Prothy Puppy Pound, which is seven pups who come on Wednesdays to dedicate their time. They are therapy dogs, and they offer, you know, a friendly cuddle or a tail wag. So, while domestic violence knows no race, no age, no gender, no socioeconomic level, we do, in the Prothonitaries Office, just want to let the folks of Bucks County know that we are here to help. Domestic violence, the scars are not only on your body, but on your soul. And at the Prothonitaries Office, we are ready and waiting when you find the courage to come and help you. So, thank you very much. And if you're interested in the statistics, I'll give you guys a handout. I have some.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank all three of you, and certainly we'd love to have you come forward. We have the proclamation for, for A Woman's Place as well, so, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on with our agenda, one correction on today's agenda, 22B, this 22B is in Boi. Give people a chance to flip to it. This is a proposed contract with Educational Data Systems, Data Systems Incorporated. The end date should be 6/30/25. It's typed as 6/30/24, it should be 6/30/25. Just that correction. All right, public comments, so I have on the agenda items, remind speakers to focus on the agenda items. First name on the list is Ed Mackhouse.
Ed Mack, Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham. I'm a scientist, engineer, former teacher, taught 10 years in the 70s in Brooklyn, and taught difficult students, broke up many fights, and have done a lot to protect children. And I'm addressing children and youth. Approved contract to provide placement and various services for children. It's about $1.5 million. What do they mean by services for children? I commend the Commissioners for standing up for Israel against Hamas, who's killed 500 children already and has hostages, killed more children in Israel than were killed in the war by Russia. But what do we mean by services for children? How could we improve these services for children? I believe in gays against groomers. They care about gays, they realize that giving transgender men that claim they're women, transgender men abuse women. Respect for women, R-E-S-P-E-C-T, respect. The domestic violence comes because women are not respected. Men don't have the right to compete in sports with women. There is these marchers in the streets for Hamas and for this LGBTQ stuff. They go in the street, they say, we're gay, we're queer, we're here for your children. What do you mean for your children? A child, they have this, they promote this puberty blockers, hormones, which are addictive, and surgeries. They addict, they don't inform the child properly, or the parents are saying, well, they don't do this, they'll commit suicide. The result is 10 times more suicides 10 or 15 years after these surgeries. When they give these puberty blockers, they're addictive, that's like used for castration. The hormones they use are addictive, and the surgeries cause irreparable damage to the children. So, for the children, I believe that we can, gays against grooming are better, we have to support this. And gays are not necessarily bad, they, they're good, but the, this transgender rights should not take away the fundamental rights to protect women and children that everyone have, and that girls are damaged and injured in sports. So, rethink, I'm sure this group, Matt, is good, but I think we could change the board to be more Republican, and it would save the children better. Thank you.
Eddie Warren.
Morning, Commissioners. Just a, two points of personal privilege. First, I commend the Commissioners for the blue and white significance and light, and they offer prayer for peace, I think, all Americans in whatever way we can. Elaine and I have an Israeli flag in our garden now, and it's so important that as a nation, we stand with people who have stood with us. I commend you for, for that. And I also personally commend the support for first responders and stand here as indication of how important it is for people out on the street to have someone close by who knows how to respond to emergencies. I speak specifically today to the agenda, to item 7A, approved resolution for substitution of parcels, and it lists a number of them. My question is, what, what are we substituting? My question is, what, what are we substituting for? What were the initial ones? Item 10B, it says there's no county money in the $35,000 car. What is the source of the funding for the vehicle? 22, the approved decreased reallocation of AARP money, about $250,000 from the Department of Corrections, I believe. It's interesting that item 22C, D and E add up to just about $250,000 of AARP money. Is this not, again, a acquiring money for one, its service, and low and behold, we switch it for others? Does anyone on the staff have an indication of roughly how much, how many dollars have been switched from what they originally came for to some other source? I suspect it's quite, quite large. And what, the last one is item 23, what is the Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeast Pennsylvania? It doesn't mention any dollar investment now, will there be in the future? Is it a case of all elected officials getting together collectively with hot air? How are we going to do this? What is it? And thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. 3A, what is GIS training and what will it specifically be used for and in what areas? 5A, how is this money being used to place children and are these legal American citizens? Who's checking on these children? This is a bipartisan issue. The United States is now the number one child and human trafficking country in the world. Since the Biden administration got rid of remain in Mexico policy, along with a rapid DNA test, which makes sure children are actually with the rightfully parents. The cartels are not only bringing the fentanyl, they're trafficking children with the assistance of Catholic charities and many other government agencies. You won't hear this from mainstream media, follow Michael Yon on Getter, along with seeing the real picture of what is really going on. Our country is being invaded and you will begin to see this in your own neighborhoods. People in San Antonio, Texas are waking up to people on their lawns, in their shopping centers, so they cannot even get into their local stores. It's horrifying to me to think of any child being raped and beaten, let alone happening on our soil, and it's probably happening in Bucks County also. After all, Bucks County is a sanctuary county. These are all policies of the Democrats.
Good morning. Robert McLean, Milford Township. I'm for the protection of women, absolutely. But unfortunately, it's an indictment on the church, which has abdicated its responsibility to the government. And I find that to be very offensive. Looking at item number nine, finance, Gerber Life Insurance, insuring accident insurance for enforcement volunteers. That caused, and that's through your affinity group, CCAP. I'm wondering, do they also cover you with a surety bond or a crime coverage? So that's number nine. Number 21, Tax Claim Bureau. I'm just assuming that this is for tax sales, excuse me, not tax sales, but sheriff's sales of real property? If I'm mistaken, could you please explain that? And number 22, workforce and economic development. Again, just a reminder to you, and I'm sure you're aware of it, that these are ARPA funds being moved around, taken from the Corrections Department and placed in other areas under this category and with a net increase of $30,000. So to date, as far as I can determine, we have about $1,003,300, something like that, that has been moved around with ARPA usages of funds, which I was hoping would be returned to the federal government. And then my last question is educational data systems, which is 22B. I looked at the 9/20 agenda, we, you spent at that time $3,200,000 on educational data systems, now you're spending another $331,000. Is, is there some way that we can use a company that's within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to do the same thing and benefit the Commonwealth in that way? That's my final question, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Liz Yaus, Northampton Township. 4A and B, please explain what is found in this advertising that appears in these two newspapers and how often these advertisements appear. The total is about $58,000 over a period of two years. 7A, what does this mean? Approved resolution for the substitution of parcels in the Keystone Opportunity Improvement Plan in Falls Township. 20A, what security projects were incomplete that are being completed for $35,000?
All right, so just kind of going through some of the lists here. Couple questions, I'm trying to see. 3A, Board of Assessment. Basically Geographic Information Services, GIS is a pretty common acronym. As computers get better, obviously, as our mapping gets better, we're able to use GIS systems to better locate property lines, better locate properties, it's used by our planning commissions, used by tax, in this case, Board of Assessment. There is new software that they're using in Board of Assessment for the first time in a long time. And so this is basically training on that software to help them as they're assessing properties, locating the properties, making sure they're doing accurate assessments. That was 3A. Question about four with the elections, Board of Elections, advertising. Obviously, there are two major papers, two papers in Bucks County, the Courier Times in the southern end of the county, the Intelligencer in the central end, the central part. So Ms. Humphrey, let me just talk about the, sorry, just wait for her phone to go off. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, you're correct. Gatehouse Media is the parent company, but that's the Courier Times and the Intel. And throughout many sections of the second-class county code, Pennsylvania government requires us to make public notice when we take official actions. And how often it happens is as often as necessary.
So would be, for example, advertising a Board of Elections meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you. Question about 7A. The Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone is located in the old US Steel, most of, or a good chunk of the old US Steel mill in Falls Township. There was a KOIZ designated in 2004. Essentially what that is, is it's tax-free status for businesses who come in. Every taxing body has to approve that tax-free status, so it has to be the township, the school district, the state, and the county. That particular KOIZ lasted 14 years, was successful in attracting some businesses to that site. The recent purchase, or purchase in 2020 by a company called Northpoint, when they, from US Steel, US Steel no longer owns any property down there, Northpoint does, they came in and also got a KOIZ status approved by the state, county, township, and school district in Pensbury. You have to list specific tax parcel numbers. This is used to attract businesses currently somewhere in the area, thinks there's a plan of, is it 15 million square feet of warehouse, something along those lines, 15 million square feet of warehouse if you go down there. It will be the largest e-commerce, e-commerce distribution site on the east coast of the United States of America. And so in this particular case, there was an agreement of sale between Northpoint and Waste Management, which owns property next door, basically swapping parcels. Waste Management owned a parcel that was sort of within where this KOIZ was located and so Northpoint is purchasing that one and selling another piece to North, to Waste Management. And so when you do that, you have to now go back to all the taxing bodies and get reapproval of all the tax parcel numbers. So one of the tax parcel numbers has changed, so just reaffirming this resolution to continue the tax-free status in that Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone. My understanding, I think, is the township has already voted on this, I believe the school district will be next, the state has approved it too. So just basically switching one parcel for another, but each parcel has to be listed independently, so. That was seven. Okay, trying to go on, a question about nine with finance. I'll turn to Mr. Bascol, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, surety bond and crime coverage was the question.
So the coverage that is before you today is for volunteer non-employees. The coverage, the crime and fidelity policy that covers all employees, including elected officials, was approved earlier this year, I think it was in February.
Okay, thank you. 10, for 10B, the funding source, I had that up and I lost it, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, Mr. Rahut.
Yes, sir, I do, thank you. This funding source was for, through the detectives, which I believe is through money recovered from drugs and other arrests that have been done through the counties, so they kind of fund their own, their own stuff. And they're buying a vehicle from, from Chapman Chrysler Jeep. And that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Number 20 was about security projects, what specific security projects are being covered by Next Gen? Not sure who might know that. That's something, it's just this building? Miss, I don't know, I see Miss Gates is, yeah. Okay, all right, so it's this, but security upgrades in this building and also the building, the Alms House building, let's go building G. Let's see, for, that was 20, right? That was 20, 21, Tax Claim Bureau Government Deals. So there is a difference between tax sales and sheriff's sales. Right, so I think this is specific just to tax sales, I believe. I'm not sure Mr. Bascol knows that? Yeah, it is just specific to tax sales, not sheriff's sales. And this is essentially allowing for online, this company allows for online participation, people that wanted to, you know, do tax or purchase potentially tax properties, properties up for tax sale, online. 22, couple of questions about switching of funds. You know, and yeah, there have been funds switched or, you know, to different projects, a lot of that has to do with, in some cases, changing guidelines from state and feds regarding when projects are allowed to be, you know, ending, when projects are moving forward and sort of moving money so that we can keep, you know, some projects going if the funding is coming to an end. A lot of it is anticipated use, some cases is higher than we thought, some cases lower than we thought. So you start switching to, to projects that are getting more use and you take away from projects that aren't being used as much for whatever reason. That's the case in this situation. Department of Corrections originally had sort of a plan in place to do some work, helping as people were being sort of, you know, re-entering society from the Corrections Department, helping them get training set up so they could try and be successful and obviously hope not, hope they won't come back. And so this is really more shifting the burden of that, I think more to EDSI to do that work. In terms of EDSI and why we're using them, I do have Brittany Jones here from our Workforce and Economic Development Agency, just want to comment on how we go about choosing companies to do this work. And EDSI does a lot of work for the county and probably has for a while.
Sure, thanks, Commissioner. So EDSI was elected actually as the one-stop operator, so that was actually put out to bid for 22B. And this is just a renewal of that, an extension of that contract for another two years. So the one-stop operator, they do services for curling, career services, training programs, temporary assistance to needy families. They also do employer engagement events, so that's what these funds are.
Okay, and the, the reference was made to, I think it was a September board meeting where we approved a different project, obviously does different, could be different funding source, could be different project, et cetera, right?
Yeah, I don't know what that one is.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate that. 23, we are going to have a presentation on the memorandum of understanding for the Southeast Pennsylvania partnership. And so I'll kind of hold off and, you know, don't want to spoil the surprise on that one. So, okay. All right, noting that we have, yeah, 5A, you know, that wasn't going to really, yeah. In terms of Delphi Village, you know, we're contracting, there are children who come through children, youth or juvenile probation who need services, need placement, can't go home, don't have a place to go. The Delphi Services essentially provides those services to those children as they, you know, we work to get them in a more stable situation and help them live the best lives they can, so. So we do have that, we had the one correction, just noting that for the consent agenda, the minutes from October 4th, 2023, any corrections or questions for the minutes? None? Okay, we'll incorporate the minutes into the consent agenda, which is items one through 22E. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on with regular agenda. The one item we have, authorize a memorandum of understanding with Delaware, Chester, Montgomery Counties to create a Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeastern PA, designate the chief, excuse me, Deputy Chief Financial Officer to serve as SEPSA board member with a sustainability officer as his or her designee. Going to ask our Sustainability Director, Mr. Dockerty, to come forward, he's going to do a presentation, I'll give a little bit of background. So in the fall of 2020, the leaders of these four counties, Delaware County, Bucks, Monco, and Chester, began meeting with Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission on an effort to see how we could more reliably, transparently, and, you know, environmentally consciously, purchase energy for this county. All four counties use approximately the same amount of energy, just in terms of county government, this isn't, this isn't everybody in the county, this is just county government. And so, you know, the idea originally was to potentially create a power purchase agreement, which would allow the four counties to act as a block to purchase energy and potentially even attract a large-scale solar energy producer to build a large-scale energy facility that would directly power, you know, the four counties' governments. There were efforts made to educate the members of all four counties who were involved, myself included. We've had members of our law department, our finance team, Mr. Dockerty, purchasing, you know, involved in this, planning commission has been involved, and that's been true with all four counties. The meetings have been about once a month for about three years now. The meetings have been about once a month for about three years now, sometimes more than once a month. We've heard from people who have already done this in places like Western Pennsylvania, Maryland, Melbourne, Australia, and several others. It's been quite the education in terms of the energy market and how we can do better. One of the goals is to try and make this not just sustainable, but also cost-effective for the people of this county, for this government, and in some cases even increase the amount of predictability we have in terms of prices. So, we are at the point now where we are looking at entering into this MOU, which would create the Sustainable Energy Partnership, which would allow these four counties to act as an entity to bypass PICO, PPL, and purchase energy directly from producers, be able to do it in a way that is transparent, do it in a way that is also very predictable and hopefully budget-conscious. And so, it's something that, you know, we've worked very, very long and hard on, you know, it's, I've been, I think I've been the only elected official on these for the past three years for all four counties, and so, it's been something I've wanted to do coming in. Mr. Dockerty has really kind of taken over a lot of this over the past, you know, year or so, so I'm going to be quiet now and allow him to fill in all the blanks and talk to us about this, this partnership and this MOU.
Thank you Commissioners, thank you Chair, Mr. Chairman, you pretty much covered it, but we're still going to go through the slides. Slide one, so if you, next slide please. The Sustainable Energy is a joint partnership among the four counties and is chaired by Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. This was initiated back in 2020, so this MOU represents a culmination of years of work and planning among the four counties, DVRPC, and for Bucks County, the Bucks County Planning Commission. Next slide, oh, here we are, back one slide please. From the beginning, we wanted to establish three goals to meet our needs. One, a sustainable energy partnership would meet renewable energy targets. Two, it would allow us to access transparent, low, and stable electricity prices. Three, it would allow us to onboard other entities, local jurisdictions, such as municipalities, authorities, and school districts. Next slide please. In February of 21, this Board of Commissioners passed 3O vote, the Ready for 100 Resolution, which calls for 100% renewable electricity for county operation needs by 2035. Honestly, I do not see another feasible way of getting there without this Sustainable Energy Partnership. Next slide please. Here's a profile of the four counties, and if you look here, you can see Bucks County in and of itself is not large enough to justify establishing a sub-account, which is the mechanism that we'll be using to procure energy and establishing a managed portfolio. So, the four counties together are large enough, there's enough economies of scale to justify a sub-account and assembling a managing, a managed portfolio for electricity procurement needs. The other thing is, we're good partners, we have a similar energy draw, and also, all four counties are in good financial standing, they have solid budgets with high credit ratings from the rating agencies. And when you're entering into this kind of partnership, it's imperative that your partners are in good financial standing as we are. Next slide please. So, electricity, we have a pretty good idea, electricity is going to continue to go up. Right now, we're in the third year of an expiring contract. Bucks County's electricity purchase is 1.2 million a year. We went to market, we go to the retail market, 2024, we saw a 32% increase, so we went from 1.2 million to 1.8 million, that's a sizable hit to the budget. What we want to do with this Sustainable Energy Partnership is establish a system for cost avoidance. We know electricity is going to continue to go up, but with this managed portfolio, we are going to able to slow the rate of cost increases. We're referring to that as cost avoidance. If you look here, you're seeing two shades. On the left, 2025, we can see the dark shade is the cost of electricity from the retail market, the lighter shade is the cost of electricity with a managed portfolio, and there's a savings there of 5.1%. On any, or for example, on 24, if you're looking at a $1.8 million expenditure, 5.1% is a sizable amount of money. Next slide please. Okay, so, a managed portfolio and a sub-account will allow us to purchase electricity contracts throughout the course of the year in the long term, and there's a valid concern that electricity rates are going to continue to go up. Right now, we purchase off the retail market, and we've done pretty good by the taxpayers in how we've executed the buys, but I want to give you an analogy. If you had a very large retirement fund, you wouldn't buy a single stock, you would assemble a portfolio of assets, one, you'd look for growth, but also you would want to minimize risk. It is similar to what we're going to be doing with the managed portfolio. We are going to buy periodically throughout the year, rather than having to buy at a fixed moment in time for the duration of the year or coming years, so we will be able to assemble a portfolio. Next slide please, oh, sorry, back one. So, Commissioner Harvey touched on this, this program allows us to bypass PICO because we'll be able to purchase from the wholesale market. This has already been established in the Baltimore region, that's referred to as Brick Pack, and it's also been established in western PA, that's referred to as WIPIC. I want to emphasize, we have good partners in our neighboring counties. I want to commend Commissioner Harvey, I think we've done 40 meetings over the last three and a half years, I can say he's attended 40 out of 40, he has rolled up his sleeves, and more than any other elected official has been involved with the process from the beginning to this MOU. I know she doesn't like to be called out, but I also want to commend Amy Fitzpatrick, she has provided invaluable legal advice, especially at the, at the end, in helping to wrap up the MOU. This partnership is good for the taxpayers of this county, and it'll be good for county operations and our electricity procurement needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, are there any questions?
Questions, Mr. Dockerty? Or Ms. Fitzpatrick? No, I think Chester's already approved this, correct?
Three or two of the three counties, or two of the four have.
Yeah, Monco meets tomorrow, I think.
My hope is that we're going to approve this today, and my hope is, well, Monco's on track to approve theirs tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that, and one of the things I think is exciting, and I've heard people talk about this, as I've been talking about this over the past few years, the expandability, the idea that, yes, this is starting out with four large counties in southeastern PA, but what we've seen in the other models, you know, in the Baltimore regional and western Pennsylvania, is that they open it up so that if a school district says, hey, we'd like to join, they're allowed to join. If a municipality wants to join, an authority wants to join, they're allowed to do that, and they're allowed to take advantage of this, and all it does is really increase the bargaining power of that group. And, you know, there's, there's a model developed for how to do this properly, but as you said, this would allow these four counties to, instead of being once a year, waiting to see what the price is going to be for electricity for the next year, if electricity starts to dip, we can buy and hold that and just be able to have that flexibility.
Yes, and now the model is, we start looking in the fall, and there can be a six-month period, and we hope we time it right. Now, we'll have more flexibility in when we can purchase portions of our electricity contracts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. All right. And so, we have on our regular agenda, item 23, this memorandum of understanding with Delaware, Chester, and Montgomery County to create the Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeast, through southeastern PA, designating the deputy chief financial officer to serve as the board member with the sustainability officer as his or her designee. Should that deputy CFO not be able to make a meeting, the financial, the sustainability officer could go. Is there no questions, is there a motion to approve item 23? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personal actions, Commissioners' List, any comments or questions, we're going the Commissioners' List? Nope, is there a motion to approve the Commissioners' List of the personal actions?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other civics, we have five donations, contributions to make, Coalition to Shelter and Support the Homeless, $3,000, the James Michener Arts Center, $20,000, NAACP Bucks County, $1,500, Nova, who was here today, $14,000, YWCA of Bucks County, $1,200. Is there a motion to make those contributions? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer, Ms. McKebbit?
Thank you Commissioner. If it pleases the Board, I would like to ask Diane Rosati to come to the podium to talk about the Drug Takeback Day, which is coming up.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I'm here today to share information about the upcoming October 28th, Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM Medication Takeback Day. As you know, we've been doing this takeback since 2010, we have now eclipsed 201,000 pounds of unused, unwanted, expired medications, that's over 100 tons, that have been collected in Bucks County alone. So, today I bring a message of thanks to the three Commissioners who, this year, provided us with a video that we'll be pushing out, all three Commissioners together provided that video, and so we want to thank you very much for doing that. Thanks, of course, to our partner in this project, the District Attorney's Office, all of law enforcement, all of the human services support that we receive, the Area Agency on Aging, who provides homebound residents with a pickup so that we can pick up unused medications from their homes, but mostly all of you who are here today, and all of the residents who know how important it is to rid your homes of the medications. So, I wanted to share with you a brief list of the things that can be collected, and they include prescription and over-the-counter medications, liquid medications, creams, ointments, inhalers, nasal sprays, pet medications, vaping devices, cartridges, pods, e-liquids, and many of our locations are collecting sharps. So, individuals who have insulin in their homes, any kind of syringes or sharps, we're happy to collect those at the medication takebacks as well, and many locations will providing, be providing Narcan nasal spray free of charge. Since 2010, we have learned how important it is to get this information out to the community, so we have here today a very modest Bethany Pacheski, Bethany, raise your hand for everybody, who creates all of our social media and is working on revising our own website to be more community-friendly, and so, I thought it only appropriate to share with you one of the items that we'll be pushing out starting this week, thanks to Lynn Manuel Miranda, of course, for the melody, but the voice, as Randy Miller told me earlier today, is Bethany's and is pitch-perfect, so I wanted to share with you, rather than to hear from me, a little bit about the takeback, so please Randy. Thank you, thank you for letting me, letting me do that this morning, and if you enjoyed Bethany's voice on that particular video, we have a longer one that I knew I couldn't show today, it's just fantastic, she's just completed it, it's to the tune of "We Didn't, We Didn't Start the Fire" by Billy Joel, and it lists every one of the locations, so we invite everyone to go to our website, we'll be pushing it out, and thanks for letting me do that, thanks everybody.
And the date is?
Thank you to Bethany, of course.
The date is?
Saturday, October 28th.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you, yes.
Diane, thank you, I was going to use my time for my, for my comments today to talk about this, the takeback program and how important it is, but I'm glad that you were here because you probably did a much better job than I would have done, but I just want to encourage people, this is actually, can be, and probably is, a life-saving program to keep medications. I've taken care of my 95-year-old mom, I know how important it is, especially for senior citizens, that, you know, the unused medications you take away so they don't have a temptation to take them when they don't really need them, so, good job explaining everything and congratulations, this is a great program, thank you.
Thank you, and great job Bethany, definitely, your talents might be wasted here, I'm just saying, you do a wonderful job, but you know.
Okay, thank you. And then, today on the consent agenda, we have Levin C., which is with a contract extension with the United Way of Bucks County, and they, we have partnered with United Way on a program to help victims of the July 12th, 2021 flooding event. And if I could invite PJ O'Brien, he's the Impact Director for Financial State Stability from the United Way, and Brian Baer, Executive Director of the Elevated Studio, has been our agency member of VOAD, to join us to talk about the successes of this program.
Geez, we do not have a song, so that throws me off completely. No, thank you so much, good morning Commissioners and County Administration, I am PJ O'Brien, Impact Director for Financial Stability at United Way of Bucks County, this is my colleague, Brian Baer, who is the founder and executive director of the Elevated Studio, which, to my knowledge, is the only nonprofit architectural firm that specializes in disaster recovery. We're here to talk about the Bucks United Flood Recovery Program. Before we do, I'm going to have Brian come up and speak a little bit about low attention disasters, before we jump into that, so Brian?
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Thanks for having us, next slide please. So, what is a low attention disaster? Well, it's a disaster that affects a small number of households or businesses, doesn't get a lot of media attention, but has a very large impact on the neighborhood. So, if you think of the, the events that have happened recently here in southeast Pennsylvania over the last three years, five years, a lot of them have been low attention disasters, right? Don't get a lot of media coverage, except for maybe the first day or two after the event actually happened. Residents are generally marginalized or, or, or lower, under-resourced, but has an impact on their own household and on their community. Typically, there is no individual assistance from FEMA, there may be public assistance, either through mitigation grants, but typically not, not so much on the, on the individual assistance. And what FEMA estimates, and what we in the nonprofit world estimate, is for every one inch of water, that causes about $25,000 worth of damage to an individual's home. Next slide please. So, recent low attention disasters, August 2020, the remnants of Tropical Storm ECEES, which affected predominantly the Eastwick and Cops Creek neighborhoods of Philadelphia, our organization, along with other VOAD, which stands for Voluntary Organizations Active in Disaster, it's a national membership organization, have been working ECEES, we are about two months away from finally closing that project out with little funding. We've raised both private and a little bit of public funding in the neighborhood of $300,000, and we were able to help 55 families. A little bit more recently, and PJ's going to talk about it, is the July 21 storm that affected both Bucks and Philadelphia. A little bit more recently, there was a train derailment across the border in Ohio, and even more recently, extreme rain events in July and September in Bucks, Berks, York, and Lackawanna Counties. Where do these resources come from? Well, they come from families, they come from friends, they come from houses of worship, they come from nonprofit agencies, those individuals, not so much on the government side, unfortunately, but really, those four key elements are those that help the neighbors, neighbors helping neighbors, right? Next slide please. So, what can we do to help better, better the communities after low attention disasters? Well, we can educate, right? What can a household do to better insure themselves? What can a house- What can a household do to better mitigate themselves? And it's not just preparedness. We talk about preparedness and not just creating a go-back, but it could be reviewing your insurance policy on an annual basis. It could be looking at your power plant and relocating your water heater, or your electrical box, or your furnace, out of the basement to an upper story. It could be taking the shrubs away from your home that could cause mold infestation, or termite infestation, or rodent infestation, or enhance the spread of a wildfire, which is what a lot of households saw in Maui recently. So those items of preparedness, those items of mitigation, will certainly help minimize the cost to the homeowner and to the community. For every household that has means, both financially and educationally, they gain $85,000 in equity after a disaster. Those that don't lose $20,000 in equity. So when we look at our communities, those households that do have means, and those households that don't have means, and those households that are more typically impacted by these low attention disasters, that amount of impact, that amount of education and preparedness and mitigation can make that community that much more equitable. To that, I'm going to turn it over to PJ.
Thanks, Brian. Next slide, please. So on July 12th, 2021, about 10 inches of rain in just a few short hours fell upon Bucks County in particular, the municipalities of Bensalem Township, Bristol Township, and Bristol Borough, leaving hundreds in homes and apartments without a place to live, or in a home that was extremely damaged. You know, typically, as we would do, county government, emergency management, nonprofits, you name it, neighbors sprung to action to assist those immediately. You know, we were immediately there to provide food, clothing, whatever was available, gift cards, hotel motel assistance through, you know, BCOC, YWCA, and really just to help clean up the mess that was left by this storm. Unfortunately, it did not meet the threshold for disaster declaration, and so we were left trying to figure out how we could assist beyond just the cleanup. Next slide, please. It is essential that we respond immediately to these types of events, you know, obviously not just for the sanitary condition, or to make sure that people are safely housed, but because these types of events can have catastrophic financial consequences on those, particularly those who are already struggling financially. They're left trying to replace items, essential items, and, you know, maneuvering their budget around, and maybe potentially putting themselves in a position to struggle with their mortgage. Also, typically, unfortunately, when these types of events happen, there are a lot of fly-by-night companies, storm chasers, they call them, that move into the area, try to convince people to perform the mitigation work, and leave them stranded for worse, either with stolen property, unfinished work, deposits stolen, you name it. For this storm event in particular, you know, the median household income for Bucks United Flood Recovery families was only 53% of the area median income in Bucks County. So you can imagine, these folks were already living at or below the survival budget for, you know, the rising costs in Bucks County, so they would not have been able to recover, if not just quickly, ever. And of course, the long-term impact of losing your home, you know, it's pretty obvious. It could take a long time to get to that point, to be able to purchase a new home, not even factoring in, you know, less inventory, trying to all of a sudden have hundreds more people look for apartments that don't exist because three were wiped out in a matter of hours for this storm. Next slide, please. So we acted quickly. Once it became pretty obvious that this was not going to be declared a disaster, the county, ourselves at United Way, Brian at the Elevated Studio, Habitat for Humanity, we got together and we formed Bucks United Flood Recovery. So what we did was, it was only for homeowners and those who were living within these three municipalities, so we contacted 300-plus of them, and we did it by phone, email, postcard. We wanted to make sure nobody was left behind. Ultimately, you know, over time, only about 90 filled out the intake form, and we were able to help navigate them through existing resources. You know, some of them just needed assistance, replacing furniture, all that. But those that needed major assistance, there were unmet needs, didn't have the insurance coverage to recover, there ended up being about 30 to 40, unfortunately, some were convinced to sell their homes, which also happens in these instances. But in the end, we have served 33 homeowners and one nonprofit, Liberté Inc. in Bensalem. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go through each of these. I mentioned the four partners of the Bucks United Flood Recovery, but we all sort of brought in, you know, our own expertise, except for United Way, we've never done anything like this before, but we are a nonprofit trying to better the community. The county of Bucks, of course, was able to provide funding, technical support, all that. Habitat, they're the experts in this. And then also, Brian at the Elevated Studio I mentioned specializes in disaster recovery. Next slide, please. So the main goal of Bucks United Flood Recovery was to leave these homes safe, sanitary, and functional. So what that means is, you know, we had to mitigate mold, we had to remove drywall, replace broken water heaters, new HVAC systems, roofs, windows, electrical work, all that damage by the floods. But we were also able to do is test all these homes right on mitigation, which is a major issue in northeastern part of the United States, and about one-quarter of them tested higher than the EPA's recommended levels, and were able to provide them with mitigation systems. Next slide, please. Another goal that we were able to do through this program was prep them for the future. And I wish I could say that because it was a 100-year flood, the next one won't happen in 100 years, but I think we all know that is no longer the case. So what we can do is, sort of as Brian mentioned, you know, build these homes back better and prepare them for any event that they may face in the future. So what that means was installing internal drainage systems, new sump pumps, waterproofing, raising their water heaters and HVAC units. And really, what this became was more than just a recovery program, it became a preparedness program. So we worked with these families closely to educate them. We built their trust, again, after having scam contractors come in and, you know, kind of ruining that trust. They didn't know who to turn to, so we built relationships with them so that they, you know, were able to learn more about what they need to do for their home, like Brian mentioned. And really, what we did is provide them with a sense of normalcy and peace of mind, which I'll get to in a second. Next slide. This is just a snapshot of before and after. This particular home, again, building back better, the original exterior was completely stuccoed, and the driving rain was able to get behind the stucco and damage almost the entire exterior of this home. So through this program, we were able to switch them to the siding and prepare them for any future events and not just slap a Band-Aid on it. Next slide, please. This is Rose Murray. This is just a snapshot. She's a single working parent that we were able to assist in Bristol Borough, and we just wanted to pull this quote, "My home means so much to me, and I actually have it back." Through our initial conversations with these homeowners, it really struck us the devastation that they were facing, fearing that they would either lose their homes or never be able to recover. And one thing, you know, we like to say at Bucks County as a motto is, "We're here for you, Bucks County." And I think this program is a great example of how we were able to do that. Government agencies, United Way, not other nonprofits, coming together to face a crisis, just a great example of, you know, "We're here for our neighbors, and we're not only going to return your home back to you the way it was, but we're going to give you that peace of mind, knowing that the next rainstorm, you're prepared and won't have to go through this all over again." Next slide, please. And of course, I just want to say thank you to the county for rising to the level to, you know, to face this crisis. We obviously would not have been able to do it without you. I also want to thank particularly the Department of Housing and Community Development. A special shout-out to Jessica Johnson, who is an outstanding public servant in that department. And just again, say from myself, Marissa Christie, our president and CEO, our entire team, thank you so much. There's 123 individuals who now are stably housed in safe and secure homes, or will be in the next few months, and that number doesn't even include those who they'll be welcoming into their homes in the coming years, you know, maybe new children, parents, whatever. You know, it's just the impact will go beyond just the immediate program. It'll go for years to come. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, PJ and Brian, for sharing that with us. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Solicitor Report, Mrs. Patrick.
Thank you, Commissioner. First, I'd just like to thank Neil for the acknowledgement. I was really honored to assist the Commissioners these last three years in working towards a sustainable energy purchasing model, so exciting day today. I just have one item to report. The Board held its Standing Executive Session yesterday, October 17th, with staff and legal counsel present to discuss personnel matters pending a prospective litigation and to receive confidential legal advice. That completes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. Ed Mackhouse.
Former scientist, engineer, physicist, studied the homophytonic particles. And I'd like to, the goal of sustainable energy sounds great. What is sustainable is the fossil fuels for 100 years. And Dr. Clausar got the Nobel Prize in Physics 2022. He's criticized the sustainable energy projects. He's saying that it's caused a trillion dollars of damage, this sustainable energy delusion. Fossil fuels are sustainable. The carbon dioxide taken in by the plants, and it brings back oxygen. The thing about this delusional stuff, it's the natural cycle of how heat transfers, and man can't change the weather. So this effort to influence the weather is not working. Under President Trump, we were self-sufficient in energy, and we could stop the wars. We didn't finance the war in Russia. Now we have to come together to stop the wars, but President Trump shouldn't be persecuted. The January 6 people shouldn't be persecuted, and we need a balance of power, not a dictatorship. So need to work together against the war, but if you look at what is the cause of wars, economics. And people need energy to drive their cars, and the price of gasoline is doubling under these policies. If we continue his energy delusions, restricting of everything with fossil fuels and electricity, electricity needs fossil fuels to generate electricity, to finance electric cars. Look at the truth. Thank you. Vote Republican. Bye.
Andy Warren?
Pass.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warren passes. Let's Curcio.
It's not on. Could you reclaim my time? It wasn't on.
Time started, ma'am.
Restart it, please. Can you restart it, please?
Ms. Curcio, speak. You've been...
Transparencies, that's what you claim, yet you have commercials saying to protect women's right to kill their babies. This is a state issue only. I guess this is aimed at the low-information voter. It's kind of like lying. Your party harasses voters, robocalls post incessantly on social media, puts misleading yard signs like the one marrying our DA Weintraub's name coupled with yours, as if he supports your weak-on crime. You send completely fabricated hit pieces on our candidates, and now you spend $57,968 of taxpayer money to advertise the election in two newspapers. This money could have been spent to help victims recover from the crime coming from Philadelphia. The funds to the sheriff's office to fund eight new deputies to pick up criminals with $8,000 in warrants, you actually told them to fundraise. This is why you never have town halls. You refuse conversation. Your Marxist gaslighting is all you know. You weaponize our local government against law-abiding citizens, moms of all people. Your legal team has not answered my question, how much of the taxpayers spent on hiding your emails and allowing you to break the law. Your goal is to put fear in the citizens, and if they dare challenge you, you're willing to bankrupt them. Three lawyers, is that correct? Why aren't these funds on the agenda? It's apparent that neither of you have ever run businesses. Career-linked luxury van, $400,000, and that doesn't include gas, upkeep, and staff. If these people wanted jobs, they'd get off their butts and get one. As Margaret Thatcher said, "Socialism isn't great until you run out of other people's money." Thank you.
Robert McLean.
Reading from the book Christian Ethics by Wayne Grudem, theologian, specifically the chapter on civil government. Romans 13 and 1 Peter 2 are select passages, and select proverbs and psalms are specific Bible passages that teach about government, present an argument for significant Christian influence. These passages contain such things as, "God, the Creator, has ordained government. Whoever resists the government resists the ordinance of God. Government officials are ministers of God to citizens for their good. Government is not a terror to good, but to evil. Good and evil are defined by God in Holy Scripture. When evil laws are called good and good laws are called evil, citizens are required to reform the government and resist the evil forced upon them. Citizens are not to show unlimited submission to unjust laws and regulations." Are these passages there simply as a matter of intellectual curiosity for Christians who will read them privately but never use them to speak to government officials about how God understands their roles and responsibilities? Does God intend this material to be concealed from people in government and kept secret by Christians who read it and silently moan about how far government has strayed from what God wants it to be? Certainly, God put such passages there, not only to inform Christians about how they should relate to civil government, but also in order that people with governmental responsibilities might know what God Himself expects from them. Thank you.
From the Rules for Judicial Candidates, may I endorse other candidates? You may not endorse any non-judicial candidates. I would like to read a statement from Matt Weintraub that he posted on Facebook about the dirty political tactics from the Bucks County Democrats. "Over the weekend, I was disappointed to learn that my name has been used by the Mars Eglia Harvey campaign without my permission. I've worked hard serving the people of Bucks County over the last three decades, and I've lived here with my family for more than half a century. I've earned my reputation, I'm proud of my good name, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to serve the people of Bucks County as the next judge of the Court of Common Pleas. Earning the support of the Bucks County voters, regardless of their party affiliation, is important because judge is nonpartisan. That is why I accepted the will of the Democratic voters who wrote me in during the primary election in May. So now I'm on both sides of the ballot. Unfortunately, in typical underhanded politics, the Bucks County Democratic Party seeks to capitalize on my name, my reputation, for their own selfish interests. I can't allow this, and I won't stand for it. In February, I neither sought nor received the endorsement of the Bucks County Democratic Committee, despite their endorsement for every other candidate on their slate. I was the only one not endorsed, and that was their choice. I was never consulted on whether my name could be used, and now it's been misappropriated and a purely political move by the Bucks County Democratic Party. Let me be crystal clear, my name appears on their signs without my endorsement and permission, and is the worst kind of underhanded politics. I resent it, and I demand that they take my name off their signs immediately, and Bob Harvey has been suing me now for 523 days." So it all fits in.
Liz Leas.
Liz Yaus, Northampton Township. I'm speaking today to the voters of Bucks County. I recently found out that the Pennsylvania Department of State has a formal election complaint site that states that fair and honest elections are the foundations of our republic, and everyone must take responsibility for helping to ensure the integrity of the process. If you have a more immediate need, please call the voter hotline at 877-VOTES-PA. This online election complaint form is provided for registered voters in Pennsylvania to submit a formal complaint to the voter's county board of elections and/or district attorney for investigation. Although the site is managed by the PA Department of State, the department has no authority to investigate or prosecute any alleged election law violations. Any information submitted with this form will be forwarded to the appropriate county authorities for possible use in future investigations and/or prosecutions. I'm sure that when Pam Van Blunt and Jean D. Geralamo become the Bucks County Commissioners, who are the board of elections, they will take these complaints seriously and they will investigate them, because everyone must be responsible for helping to ensure the integrity of our elections. The county will be spending nearly $48,000 of taxpayer money for newspaper advertising over a two-year period. I would like to see this election complaint website be part of that advertisement, and I'd also like to see a full-fledged voter education program put forth about our elections for the Bucks County residents in many ways, not just in the newspaper. With my last few seconds, I'll ask once again, we need a town hall-style meeting once a month in the evening, so working people such as myself can attend. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Move on with Commissioner comments. Commissioner D. Geralamo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I was going to talk about the drug-take-back program, but since we had Diane Rosetti, no comments today.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Marsaglia.
Aye. I just wanted to remind everybody that there is, the Hold On You Matter Suicide Prevention and Awareness Group is having an event at Friday night from 6:30 to 9:00 at Christ Home. You can just go on to holdonyoumatter.com, and you can register, or you can just show up, but it's easier for all of us if you register, and we encourage people to attend.
Okay. Thank you. Just a few reminders, for the last day to register to vote is the 23rd of this month, so that's next week. So, if you need to register to vote, you have until the 23rd. The last day to apply for a mail-in or absentee ballot is Halloween at 5:00 p.m. So, before you go trick-or-treating, you know, drop off your application for mail-in or absentee, or submit it. The last day to apply again for mail-in or absentee is 5:00 p.m. on the 31st of October. And just to kind of close the loop on what we've talked about here with the Southeast Partnership, you know, it's, when we first got involved in these discussions at the county level, there were quite a few people, you know, in all four counties, myself included, who really didn't know a whole lot about energy procurement, or how any of that worked, really had never heard of power purchase agreements, and were, so it was a lot of education for the first about year, I would say. Myself, you know, other members of this government, the administration, we did have Russell Rice, who's our deputy chief finance officer, he was involved very early on. We had members of the Law Department, eventually Ms. Fitzpatrick became sort of the standard. She drew the short straw, or she was the last one in the office that day, but she ended up becoming the one who came to all the meetings. You know, Liz Gates at Purchasing has been involved in these, our Planning Commission, several different members over time. And then, once Mr. Dockerty came on, and our environmental planner, Cassandra Gubinson, they've been involved as well. Ms. McKebbit, we've done presentation, kind of updates, you know, the commissioners have been updated, as have the ones in other counties. It is pretty, it's a pretty, and we knew this going in, that it was going to be about a three- or four-year process of planning this out and getting it moving, all with an idea of what could we do responsibly, what could we do as a county, as a group of counties to strengthen our bargaining power, strengthening our power to use energy that, you know, is more sustainable, more focused on future generations. You know, as much as we'd like to think that oil will last forever, it won't. We know that, which is the reason why you see prices going up so much. You know, it is a reality that climate change is a thing. It's not invented in China. It is something that is affecting us. Just today, I read in a newspaper, the predictions for higher temperatures than normal over this winter, and more rainfall. And so, you know, as we think about actions we can take, we need to, you know, think globally, act locally, was the old phrase, and it still rings true. But this has been a lot of work, and I really want to, you know, kind of thank the people, you know, who are here in this room, who helped, and thank my fellow commissioners for having an open mind, because, you know, I struggled to sort of explain a lot of this to them as I was learning it and trying to teach them. So, having somebody with the background Mr. Dockerty has to be able to come in and give a presentation, Ms. Fitzpatrick has the trust of this board, and has now, since she came on board with the Law Department, and so we value her opinion greatly, as we do Mr. Rice, Ms. Gates, and others. But it's probably the person who isn't in the room, won't hear this message, the person to thank the most is a young woman named Liz Compatello, who works for the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and she has really shepherded these four counties. She's been herding a lot of cats for the past three years, doing a lot of work to get this moving, and I'm sure she's going to be very happy to hear that we've approved it, if she hasn't been told already. And Montgomery County will approve it tomorrow, and so we will actually have major movement. This is a really big deal. This could be something that changes how, not just this county, but governments in this county, school districts in this county, potentially even entities like the Community College, how they purchase energy, and in some cases, do it in ways that can be projected for years and years and years in advance, to lock in prices for us. So, and move us toward a future that is greener, cleaner, and also, you know, more sustainable and safer. So, thank you, everybody, for all your work, really appreciate it. It's been a long haul, and it's something definitely I'm very, very proud of, one of the things I think I might be proud of, stuff from my time here on this board. So, thank you. Senator Bush, to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All favor.
Aye.